Chief.
Oh, I can't read, I can't see that far.
He's backwards instead of front leg.
Does it matter where I put this?
Right up there if you'd like, or throw it to me and I'll put it there. Come there.
Okay.
Hello?
My letter sent.
Hello? Hello?
Uh, what time is it? Alright, so we're gonna open the meeting at seven o'clock. We're being recorded a couple times and we are live. The Zoom. Alright, so first up, we have meeting minutes from September fourteenth. Is there a second?
Oh, second, but I wasn't.
Oh, any discussion? On favor? I?
Abstain.
Hi. Any audience participation comment?
Oh, yeah.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. As far as spreading, uh, round up on the volleyball court there?
Yes.
No can do.
Okay.
State has regulations on it.
Okay.
Has to be done by a licensed insurance person.
Okay.
So my suggestion is, is, uh, let Dougie have at it, you know?
Okay.
It's sand, so nothing to worry about.
Is he licensed?
Oh, he was saying let Dougie have at it with a rake.
Well, have, do it with a rake. That way you're, you know, it's not worth going out and hiring somebody and go through that hassle.
So have him just, okay, that's fine. Do we wanna let, um, can we send Dougie a message to let him know? I already asked him to do the vines on the stone wall, but if we can remind him that too. Thank you. Did you have a question, Mary? Yeah, we give that a try? That's perfectly good, yeah.
When you said the vines on the stone wall, did you specify which stone wall?
Perhaps I should be more specific, but yeah, I did. We were looking at it when I was talking. So I was talking about the whole back area there where we are working to rebuild the stone wall once.
I'm totally smiling underneath my mask.
I know, I can tell. I can tell by your eyes. Okay, um, so next up, we are gonna go to our first action item and I'm gonna turn our volume up so we can hear our participants. Um, so this is review, take action on letter sent from the town to the Mass Division of Capital Asset Management regarding closure of Cobble Mountain. So let's turn this up so we can hear.
So this is all in relation to the, uh, the effort we've been under going to research what it is exactly is the town's role when it comes to that closure of Cobble Mountain Road. Um, we have on the line, uh, Lisa Mead, attorney Lisa Mead, who we went forward and hired as an alternative counsel. As spoke, as you recall, our town council does work for some people, so it was a conflict of interest that we didn't want to necessarily, um.
Neither party can use our town council.
Yeah.
Guess that.
So we were finding Lisa Mead who's put forward a proposal and has been helping us research this quite extensively. So I'm gonna let Lisa take the floor if you wanna just, talk about or give some background on what's going on, what we're trying to accomplish tonight.
Sure. Um, thank you, Josh, and good evening, members of the board and chair. So as Josh indicated a few months ago, right, actually at the height of the pandemic, when it all first started, engaged us to take a look at, um, the ownership of Cobble Mountain Road as it is in Blandford and then as it goes over into Russell and Granville. And, um, it's taken some work. I do wanna just say one thing, we haven't gotten into the registry. I don't think that we need to at this point. Um, but that last kind of issue wasn't taken care of. However, uh, DCAM has been very forthcoming for us. So in addition to doing the title to the extent that we could, which was pretty significant, as well as receiving all of DCAM's documents relating to Cobble Mountain Road, um, we've come up with essentially the following scenario. And allow me just to run through it briefly and then, um, talk about the action items that Josh has asked us to take in regards to the board's request to DCAM. So first, as the board may or may not know, that road was originally laid out in nineteen twenty-seven as a county road. And, um, when the county was dissolved in nineteen ninety-seven, it went into ownership of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The Commonwealth transferred control over it via legislative action to DCAM. Okay, so DCAM actually owns and controls Cobble Mountain Road. In two thousand one, two thousand two, the Springfield Water and Sewer District asked DCAM to close a portion of Cobble Mountain Road because they were concerned about safety issues related to the reservoir and potential terrorist activities. Um, it took DCAM a couple of years, um, but they actually then closed a portion of Cobble Mountain Road. Now, you might recall that, um, where you might know that there are barriers, Jersey barriers located about one and three quarters miles away from the town of Blandford, uh, town line as it is with Russell. Um, so the question is whether or not the portion of the road that was closed was appropriately closed or not. That having been said, that's where the road was closed. In two thousand and four, the legislature adopted further legislation, um, authorizing DCAM to actually sell a portion of Cobble Mountain Road to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. They haven't actually ever done that. Um, there is no deed to that effect and there is a number of requests from the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to DCAM to accomplish that, but it has not actually ever occurred. What is very interesting in that legislation, however, is that the area which they are permitted to sell to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission or district does not actually lie in Blandford. And there is a discrepancy in the legislation. So in section sixty-three of the legislation, it actually says that they have a right to sell parcels of land that are located in Blandford, Russell, and Granville, but then it goes on to specifically define those sections of the road that they're permitted to sell. And those sections of road that they're permitted to sell are actually fully within Russell and Granville and not in the town of Blandford. Um, Josh, did you give that plan to the, um, to the board?
Yeah.
Yes.
You can see that on that, uh, so we put it on a GIS map, so it was easier for you to see. So we compared the description in the legislation to the actual plans of record referred to in the legislation. And then we overlaid it on a GIS map. And when you overlay it on the GIS map by the descriptions from the, um, from the record, you'll see that none of that land or none of that road exists in the town of Blandford. It all exists in Russell and Granville. And so, um, Josh, um, for a number of reasons, uh, not the least of which is, um, public safety and public access and the fact that Cobble Mountain Road is listed on MEMA as an emergency access road. Um, but also for access for your own residents, um, for obvious reasons. Josh has asked that we draft a letter on behalf of, of the board and have the select board review it to, um, DCAM, asking them to remove the Jersey barriers within the town of Blandford, um, to provide and open up that access, um, in the town of Blandford. So that's the, the purpose of the letter, um, and you can see in the second to the last paragraph why we, talk about why it's important for the town to do that, actually the third to the last paragraph. Um, you know, the impacts on public safety, the additional miles that you have to go out of the way for mutual aid, um, access to the residents, the fact that it's listed as MEMA as emergency access road, um, and the fact that the townspeople are limited in access to important natural resources, um, the residents of the town. Importantly also because it does not appear as though in the legislation they had a right to close that down. Although I will be very clear with you that that is certainly a gray area in the legislation. But certainly, um, we should start that conversation with DCAM. So, um, without, I'm happy to take any questions that the, the board might have.
Thank you, Lisa. Do you guys have questions right after that?
Oh, I'm good. I read the letter, so she cased it all in the letter.
Yeah, that was a very easy explanation to follow. I appreciate it.
The request is twofold. It's one, or A, opened it up to its entirety specifically because of, um, the road being identified as an emergency route by MEMA. But also B, um, if at all, or anything else that we leave the Jersey barrier into that.
I move it back to the Russell arm.
Or near.
Mm-hmm.
Well, as interpreted by Lisa, um, attorney me. So that's where we are.
So the letter that Springfield has sent to DCAM requesting to purchase the road, is there a recent one?
It's not, well, not that we know. I, I will tell you, DCAM, and you know, i-if DCAM has other information and they think that we're incorrect on our interpretation, I always like to say in these kinds of, um, pieces of correspondence, you know, we're open to be educated for sure. Because there's a lot of history here and a lot of information. Uh, DCAM was very forthcoming. Um, they, uh, were very cooperative. It was difficult. Um, given everybody's situation and the fact that people aren't in offices, but they gave us electronic files of everything that they had. And, um, so I believe that we've only seen, you know, the court, the most, the correspondence, there's no more recent correspondence, uh, from the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission than that, which you've already seen. So I'm, I'm happy to be educated by them, um, but that's what we could see so far.
Okay. Does anyone have questions out there? Alright, so we're ready to sign our letter. Thank you, Lisa, and send it off. Do we need a motion to approve it, Josh?
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking for is to get a, uh, a unified vote on this and have the three of you sign.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to, sorry, to take action, um, on the letter sent, on the letter from the town to the Mass Division of Capital Asset Management regarding closure of Cobble Mountain Road. Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the board. Josh, have a good night.
So next up.
Thank you, Lisa.
Welcome, my pleasure.
Next up, we have, thank you, here Josh, I need this one. Yep. Uh, we have an application, so we have, oh, we'll have to turn our volume up again. We have Nick, I'm gonna say your name wrong, Nick, Shusano. He's muted and he may, oh, no, he unmuted. Hold on a second, Nick, sorry, we can't hear you yet. We're, we gotta turn our volume up.
Can you hear me now?
Hey, Nick, you're good to go.
Nice.
Hi, Nick.
Hello?
Thank you for joining us. So we have a letter of, that is written from you with your, um, hearing myself kickback is really distracting, I apologize, with your.
Interest.
Interest. Killing me. And experience. And so I understand that you are currently the plumbing inspector in Chester.
Yep.
Oh, and electrical inspector, is it?
Nope, plumbing inspector and health.
Sorry, don't throw me in more than I'm already thrown with this.
Board of Health Chair.
So we are talking to you today, interest in appointing you as our assistant plumbing inspector for some backup for, um, Aaron Potite.
Yep.
Okay. So we've reviewed your letter and I'm very happy with your experience. You definitely are qualified. You have all the certifications that you need up to date. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and we're learning the same as you guys, the shared permit, permit, online permitting, so that should work out pretty good, too.
Yes, that's perfect. Eric, Tom, do you guys have any questions for Nick?
No, I think it was pretty well covered right in his letter.
Okay.
I'm all good.
Okay.
I move we appoint this gentleman as assistant plumbing inspector.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was easy, Nick.
Easy, yes.
So I have a packet for you that I will have you complete, so we'll have to, if you can pick this up at town hall, would that be possible?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem, maybe.
Okay, so you can pick it up at the town administrator office and then you can return it to the same office when you're finished.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, bye, everybody.
Bye, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, boy, can I not wait to shut this?
So the executive secretary for the Board of Select made it very clear that he is supposed to fill out what's inside the paper. As to the rest, I just wanna make sure I passed on those instructions.
Yeah, don't, you gotta listen to Joanne, she's in charge around here.
Did I do okay, Joanne?
Alright, next up, we have review and take action on contract between the town and PVPC for Green Communities Administrative Assistant Services. So we have a contract which has been reviewed by attorneys, um, to have PVPC do our administrative assistant, um, green community work. I believe this is just renewing it, is that correct, Josh? Or is this new?
No, this is, this is, we were in a new grant year.
Okay.
Contract with the Commonwealth to execute energy conservation measures in the town and we're contracting with the higher value planning commission to coordinate the, the services.
Okay.
That's award and services, right? I mean, they're not gonna do the workforce, they're doing all the admin support that's associated.
Yeah, the reporting, the procuring, the, the labor.
Yep.
Involved with the grant, as they helped us with the last grant period, if you remember.
Yes. Which was highly successful for us. Okay, um.
It's vetted by council, it's signatures, um.
What's the value of the contract?
Not to exceed six thousand?
And that comes out a part of the Green Administrative Fund that we.
It comes all of the Green.
Yep, out of that, I don't know, hundred and some thousand dollar check, right?
Do we have a copy to sign? I can sign Eric's copy. Alright, is there a motion?
So moves.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Today's the twenty-first. Excellent, we hand it over to Josh, probably. Okay, next up, we have review and take action contracts between us and PVPC, coordinating efforts to complete the resilient master plan and open space recreation projects. So this is what we talked about a little bit last week, um, which we received a grant for. Um, so PVPC will do similar, is it doing the legwork for us on this one? Is that pretty much?
Yep, so we have nine months, um, to do this project and they'll be coordinating all the tasks and drafting the plan.
So all the deliverables are on the last page, tasks one through, one point one through one point six, right?
Those were the deliverables that were presented to the grant right into Commonwealth, which was essentially approved.
Great. And again, vetted by town council.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Next up, we have review and take action. Hold on, I can't write and talk at the same time, twenty-one, twenty. I know. Um, sending notices to licensees. Okay, so we've got our twenty-twenty-one alcoholic beverage licensure. So we have three, um, all three of our businesses looking to renew their licenses for this year.
What's that, yeah, it's that time of the year, this is just us sending them a notice that it's time for your annual renewal.
So we don't know necessarily whether these are the three that have licenses, we're sending them a note that said it's time to renew.
Yep, you have on our files.
Yeah.
Have an active license, annual renewal time, if you don't sign such and such document, send it back by X date.
Yep.
And that's with the three hundred dollar license fee. Okay. Okay, so motion to, um, approve and send notices for licenses, licensees for twenty-twenty-one alcoholic beverage retail license. Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? Mary?
Could you name the three, please?
Sure, we've got, um.
So we don't actually have them by establishment, so it would be that.
On the, uh, this, the address part, the personalized.
Okay.
See the personal address, but typically it's for part of the business, so.
Well, we have the Blandford store.
The Blandford store, the Blandford club, and the.
And the ski area.
Ski area.
Are those them? Do we all need to sign?
No, nobody needs to sign anything.
Okay.
I mean, unless you really wanna make it a personal signature, it does say sincerely.
Do you want me to sign them? Alright.
Just figuring, you know, since you guys have a license forward.
You want my doctor's signature?
Refreshing, isn't it?
Yeah. Alright, so we have review and take action on the host community agreement with Belle Flure. So this is our host community in great, agreement with Belle Flure Holdings, which is the, um, company looking to build a growing facility in the town. So this hosted community agreement has been vetted by the attorneys. Um, any costs, um, included in, um, any of our consultation with attorneys, um, any, uh, meetings that we would have to hold are, uh, the company is held accountable for those, uh, to reimburse the town. Um, it requires three percent of, uh, profits, um, be paid to the town.
There's the three percent of the wholesale value.
Wholesale value, sorry. And there's also, um, a five thousand dollar, um, community, um, gift that they are committed to yearly.
To clarify that, it is an annual charitable non-profit contribution in an amount no less than five thousand dollars.
Um, there's a section uh, regarding security and consultation with our police department. And it's pretty thorough. I, I didn't really feel like I had anything to add to it.
I see Blake Mensing's on the line, I'm not sure if he wanted to.
Oh, Blake, if I turn up the volume. Hold on, Blake, we can't hear you.
I bet the volume was set up high enough.
No.
She turned it back down.
Hey, Blake.
Good evening. I, I was mostly just gonna passively observe, but if you'd like to hear from me, happy to, to chime in.
Uh, we just needed to make sure we had the volume up high enough. In case you wanted to insert a comment, we could actually hear it.
Sure, yep. Any questions, happy to answer, and if not, I'll, uh, sit here quietly and let you chat it out.
You guys, either of you have any questions thus far? Mary, you have a question?
Um, yeah, uh, we're looking at potentially a twenty-three million dollar a year profit here, gross. And to offer us for our two not-for-profit entities in town, which would be the church and the historical society, a gift no less than five thousand dollars, I think, is too small, maybe no less than fifty thousand dollars to be shared or distributed, plus Mr. Mensing mentioned the library and I think he even mentioned the COA. While they're not directly not-for-profit, they are for tax purposes and donations construed as municipal entities and therefore not-for-profit. They can be written off as tax. Um, so I would like to see that figure increased.
So I did, so Mark and I, Tom counsel, and I spoke about that. And the response is, you know, when you're going through this process and you're negotiating these things, you don't wanna come across as a, as a, because the, the fact that we're, you know, there's that community impact fee for three thousand dollars.
Three percent?
Three percent.
Sorry, three percent. And now communities, and you know, have been adding this, um, charitable donation part and we don't wanna come across as trying to take advantage. And I know I get the amount that they're making or whatnot, but.
It's also their choice.
So, um.
No, no part in the decision is, if they're going to offer funds to the town, we can't say, well, this year go here, this year go there, next year go somewhere else.
But I mean, don't forget, we're also taking in a large amount, three percent of a positive twenty-three million, so we're also taking in a large amount of tax income that can be used for things like the library and the COA. So in my personal opinion, in my, so hold on, in my personal opinion, I want businesses to come to Blandford. I don't want to look like we're saying, well, if you wanna, you have to give us fifty thousand dollars for.
That's called extortion.
Uh, that doesn't feel appropriate to me. Go ahead.
We didn't ask this of the solar people who are gonna make exorbitant profits also, so.
If I, if I may.
Where we stand and they made the offer. Uh, I, I believe in fairness to them, that we should accept the offer and step back.
Okay, and then let's look at the three percent tax. That's only good for five years, three percent of, say, twenty-three million dollars.
And then to be renegotiated.
It doesn't say that in the state guideline.
It says it here that the host community agreement will be renegotiated.
Contract, it says that, but if you look at the host community guidelines that the uh, you know, the control commission sorts out, it says the community impact fee is limited to a term of five years. It doesn't say anything about renegotiation.
So if I may, on that point.
They can, they can renegotiate a new optional community impact fee.
Let's let Blake comment on that. Go ahead, Blake.
Yes, so again, I'm a, I'm a former municipal attorney, so I've, I've worked on HCAs in other contexts for towns in Massachusetts. Um, and I'll also tell you, as a, as a full-time cannabis attorney, um, the three percent and the five years is, is limited to a single contract of five years, meaning at one time, you have a five-year period where you can collect up to three percent of gross revenues. The entire state, every municipality I've dealt with, has a clause that's very comparable, saying, when this is up, you must renegotiate. And the reason, um, you can have successive contracts is, as is a function of your license, you must, you shall have a host community agreement in place with the town. Um, so after five years, if we all determine that the impacts, you know, aren't in fact representing three percent, we would present evidence, you know, on our side, saying, here's what we think the actual number would be. Um, and, and you obviously could say, here's, here's the receipts of what it actually cost in terms of our, um, you know, impacts that we actually brought to town. Um, so yeah, every, every town in the entire state has, you know, a limit on how long a, a single HCA can, uh, last, that's five years. Every single one that I've, I've read and, and written has that, um, you know, baked in that you're going to have successor HCAs just for five years at a clip. So there's no period of time where there won't be an HCA in place, um, unless the law changes. Um, and just going back a half step to the, to the charitable stuff, um, there is pending legislation, um, that would actually say it's three percent and no other dollar figure charitable or otherwise may appear in the HCA. Um, you know, I'm not a political prognosticator, I don't know if that'll pass or not, but that's, that's the proposal, um, under the, you know, what, the legislation that's been introduced. What we would do if they. What we would do if they, if the cannabis control commission said, you can't, you know, have that 5,000 in that HCA. You know, Belle Flur would just do it sort of separately on its own initiative. And that is, you know, again, the, the floor of it. You know, if this is wildly successful, I'm sure they're, they're looking to give back in more, you know, forceful dollars. But what we can't do is basically have that number change at this point, just because we've gone back and forth. And as, as your compatriots mentioned, you know, asking for it now is, you know, the town asking for it is different than us offering it. And that's sort of one is okay and one is not.
TJ, do you have a comment?
Yeah. I don't see anything in the contract that says that after five years, there's any kind of renegotiation here.
It's in there TJ, I know I read it.
He just, Blake said the same thing. In order to operate, they must have a host community agreement. Our community agreement expires in five years, so they must renegotiate. Get a host community agreement.
I know I saw it in there. I remember reading it today.
It is on page two. Or second full paragraph, I believe.
So TJ, the whole, they still have to go through their, that process with the planning board, site review process. A host community agreement is separate from that process. So whether they sign. If and when they do sign it tonight, it doesn't impact their ability to go through the bottom endorsement to this whole process that they have to undergo. I think there's a comment, misunderstanding of what a host community agreement actually is.
Well, it seems to me, all right, if you're signing a draft agreement, okay? And when it comes to dollars and dollars, and they go to the state table, they sign off on it, we're going to go build and function.
But TJ, it doesn't even matter because this is not costing us anything. We are reimbursed for any issues with attorney, any meetings. We are reimbursed for everything. So this host community agreement is not costing us anything. So for us to review it and to sign it and put it into place is just the next step for them. This is in no way a loss for Blanford for us to move forward.
Also, it says in here that this company is responsible for local taxes on that property too.
Yeah. So we're looking at a possible income gain of almost $700,000 for the town of Blanford through the 3%.
Well, it's not just the 3%, there's also local taxes.
No.
Property, property and facility.
Yeah, as well.
It's here that if there had been no abatement, this payment should be in addition.
Yeah, that's what Josh was saying.
If there's no abatement.
Sorry, I can't.
That's okay. Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, it says in here, in the, in the guidelines, that that 3% tax is very specific to specific costs. So it may not be a full 3% or the $600,000 that comes to the town, or however much it is, may or may not be available for things other than our town police department having to patrol the area, or the fire department having to patrol the area, or respond to alarms. I, I don't know what else. What are those things that would be covered by that 3% tax?
I'm sorry, are you saying?
And we have to give the money back if we don't spend it all.
So you're, you're saying that 3% that comes to us has to be allocated in specific areas?
It's a community impact fee, so it's specifically to address those things that are involved with the existence of the cultivation of the town of Blanford.
Yep. And the language that I'd highlight, yep, it's, it's on page two again. First full paragraph, at least on my version, and it says, the parties agree that the amount of the community impact fees set forth herein is reasonably related to the real tangible and intangible mitigation costs imposed upon the town, meaning it's 3%. And if we were to basically sue to say it's not 3%, the town would say, right here, it says you've agreed that 3% is reasonably related. So that's not the intent at all. We, you know, again, we, we would need the host community agreement to, to go through the state licensing process. And that's right now today, the, the, the cost of doing business in this state. So that's, you know, baked into my client's financial projections, and they're, they're happy to, to give that to the town of Blanford. So there's, there's nothing that we would do under this agreement to try to claw that back. It's, it's right there in black and white, saying that we agree that that number is the number.
Yes.
It's like Mary mentioned something though, that kind of provoked my thought. So if, so yeah, those, that, that 3% is earmarked to spend toward specific mitigation costs or whatnot. If we happen to not spend 100% of the dollar amount, what happens?
It says here it could be used, right in here it could be used for the town.
Yep, it's the town's money no matter what.
Says, the town may use community impact fees to address appropriate town needs at the sole discretion of the town's board of selectmen.
Once they write that check each year or quarterly, or whatever the schedule is, we frankly, you know, would like to find out what you did with it, but it's not to do anything other than sort of take pride in, in helping. So yeah, it's yours. You've got the keys to the, the car there. The, the 3% is 3%. And we don't get a vote, you know, as non-selectmen. You, you can just spend that on whatever issue is facing the town at the time.
TJ, question?
Blake, did you give me a definition for what this arms length wholesale is? That don't make any sense to me.
Yeah. So basically the reason that's in there is there are entities that have licenses across multiple categories. So your town attorney, you know, because they've done this for a bunch of other towns, included that. What that means is if this group were to ever open a retail, they can't just say, you know, we're transferring it from one license to another to try to short the town. It's whatever that, that price on, you know, as a commodity would be on the market. You know, sort of the, the going rate for, for that product, and that's what the 3% is of. Again, the, the, you know, KP law said, look, we, if someone's big enough of an entity, we don't want to transfer from one arm to the other to be deemed $0 changing hands. Otherwise, the town would be left with nothing. So that language protects you. You know, they don't, my clients don't currently have a plan to open a retail. If they do, that, that language would come up. So even an intra-company transfer would still have the wholesale, the going wholesale price assigned to it in terms of calculating the percentage that Blanford would receive.
Thank you Blake.
Thank you.
Question, Mary?
Yeah, I would like to. Can they dictate to us that says it is the sole responsibility of the board of selectmen to do with this fund? I should think that ought to be something that would come before the town rather than the sole discretion of the board of selectmen. You don't have sole discretion right now over anything except Lawson Park as their trustees. Does that count correctly? Any, any spending, any fiduciary stewardship and responsibility that you hold is subject to confirmation by the town.
Well, it would have to go through the budget process anyways. I can't imagine that we would, it's not like the funding comes into the general account is my understanding, and then we would have to go through the budget process of the town.
I, all the same, I would like to see that deleted. The town may use community impact fees to address appropriate town needs at the sole discretion of the town's board of selectmen. That gives the board of selectmen, now you guys can be okay, but you don't know what's coming in the next five years.
So if I may on that one, that's really just, that's really just intended to, to make it clear that Belle Flur doesn't get the town to spend it how it wants. So whatever process you all go through, again, subject, you know, to your own bylaws and, you know, charter if you have one, and, and just sort of basic governance, that's, we don't get a vote. That's what we're saying there. I don't have any issue if you want to say the sole discretion of the town and leave it open-ended like that. You know, it's, it's, you, you spend money the way your town, you know, finance committee and, and, you know, the, the town meeting, et cetera, votes. It's just making it clear that, that Belle Flur doesn't get to say, spend it here. Once it's.
It's not like the selectmen can spend that money. That's not how our budget process works.
And let's say that, let's say at the discretion of the town or with the vote of the town, not the board of selectmen, please.
It's the way our town bylaws are set up.
I mean. Yeah, it's, again, it's a moot point. We can change it, but.
Yeah, if you, if you want to just delete the apostrophe S and board of selectmen, I, I am 100% okay with that. And I can't imagine your, your town council would. It just gives them more, you more wiggle room under your existing rubric of how you govern. So yeah, the same thing. We, we don't get a vote. We know that. That's what that sentence is saying. Whether it ends with town's board of selectmen or town, from my perspective, we don't, we don't care. So that's a fine amendment from, from my perspective.
Blake, I really appreciate it because this could give our town council, our town council meetings like years of endurance with that one sentence. It could be fun.
I've, I've been in some marathon town meetings when they, you know, I had an hour and a half and we talked about a leash law in a cemetery, and I just couldn't believe we spent that amount of time for that town. But yes.
Right. Oh yeah. We've had those records too. Okay, so is there any more discussion on this before? Mary, yes. You are, I are testing my patience tonight.
At the top of page two of the draft, include all marijuana, marijuana infused products, paraphernalia. Does that mean that Belle Flur is going to be manufacturing pipes and bongs and whatever else you use for marijuana?
No, that's, that's language from, from KP law that really pertains to retailers that do sell these things. As a cultivator, they're only going to be allowed to sell cannabis to other licensed cannabis establishments at wholesale. So I just didn't push back on that because it's, it's, you know, KP law's boilerplate. There is no intent at all to, to make those products on-site.
You know, if they were, I mean, what, what difference does that make? No, I, and even if they did make pipes and, what difference does? I'm not sure I understand what difference that would make. Why do we care if they make something to smoke the product with?
If you take that out, that means you don't get a percentage of it. So not to argue against my client, but I would say keep that in if you want to preserve the maximum number of dollars the town could get.
Or just start writing discount checks right now.
Yeah. Okay. Are we good? All right. So I'll make a motion to take action on the host community agreement with Belle Flur Holdings with the amendment regarding the elimination of the sole discretion of select board and amendment to add sole discretion of the town. Is that the wording Blake that I'm looking for?
Yep, just delete the apostrophe S and board of selectmen from that sentence. Yep.
Perfect. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Ah, beautiful. Congratulations.
I vote nay, just because I can. I really wanted it to be my sole discretion.
Are you really voting nay?
Yes.
Oh my God, you're a pain in the butt. Okay. Is this someone I'm signing?
I prefer to leave it as written. It was fine.
Okay, I gotta sign that one. It doesn't matter. Either way, it's going to go through the same process, so.
One final point of clarification.
Nitpicky. All right. So next up, we've got, oh, select board.
Sorry, if I may, just one quick.
Yeah. Sorry Blake.
That's okay. I'll follow up with you Joshua to get the HCA certification form. That's, that's all the, the only document the state needs to see. I believe I emailed that to you, but if not, I will email it to you. It just says, you authorize to sign the HCA on X date. That's what the commission looks at. So anyway, I appreciate it all. Thank you all. We look forward to doing business in town. Appreciate it.
Thanks Blake. Have a good one. I'm turning the volume off again, so.
Okay, take care.
So, so I have to send it, send it your way right now. I'm going to refrain. All right. Next, we have discussed select board meeting schedule and meeting time. So we were talking about A, meeting at six instead of seven, since it's getting dark and, you know, I have to wake up early. B, meeting every other week. Do we, do we need to meet weekly? What do you, what do you guys think?
I'd like to see us go back to six o'clock.
How does that work for you? You, because I know you, you're.
I look forward to six o'clock.
Okay. So let's, so let's add that to a motion. What about every other week? Josh, are you okay with us every other week? Or do you need us weekly and then call us in?
You guys meet weekly, it's official most of the time.
To keep stuff flowing.
Okay.
You can do it every other week and when I do need to meet on a week that's a non-meeting week, I can let you guys know, hey, we got a meeting.
I think it does remove some of that like signing checks and all that stuff. If we're just here, if we don't have much of a meeting, let's go.
So we can keep it weekly then, but I would make a motion to move the select board meetings to 6:00 PM start. Discussion? All in favor?
On board.
Ah, beautiful. No, we're keeping it weekly, but we're moving to six. And Jennifer, do you have a COVID update for us live and in person?
You go Beau.
Yes, I appreciate you being here.
So let's see, as of the 20th, we have 340 newly confirmed cases with Blanford alcohol being reported. Just a reminder that we're still in phase three and step one, and that there is no talk about moving forward until spring, or at the earliest possibly the summer.
Okay.
Right now, our focus is really on school. Some kids are in school, some kids aren't in school, some towns have started, at least seven times seven. And also a major concern is with the flu season in common.
What, we have flu viruses too?
Well, it takes away from practice, you know, divisions. And then that was my next, that the Baker administration really urges that people go and get a shot.
Yeah.
I should say sooner than later. I know the COA did many drive-throughs.
That was going to be my question.
For uptight and early people, they were able to accommodate. So, you know, Blanford has, you know, hundreds of more people. So they really are urging those to go get it now and not to wait.
Is there an opportunity, and I know this is really weird, but is there an opportunity that we can use some of our state given aid for COVID preparedness to just have a flu vaccine clinic that we can run right through this facility?
We did, but it was, I guess, small. They could only handle.
I don't know. I mean, it wasn't advertised.
Get so much in at a time. And.
Of the vaccine, okay.
Exactly. So you would really have to know who, like the COA did, you have to know how many people you're going to have.
Yeah, there, there need to know in advance.
And then you're going to be doing it on multiple times.
Yeah.
So.
Do we know of any other, like, local flu clinics that are running that we can sort of put out on our board and let people know?
CVS does, you know, they're all around.
Every drugstore around.
I was just thinking of a good old fashioned military walk down the hallway, take one on the right arm, take one on the left arm, shut up and keep moving.
Question TJ?
You have to call and make it, like if you're going to CVS or Walgreens, you gotta call in advance to make sure they have it.
Oh, really?
And then you have to make a reservation. Because I know Co called down to CVS and they said, we don't have it. We don't know when we're going to get it. So she left her name, she wanted to get hers out up here.
Yep.
But, you know, it's not as available as they may doubt to be.
They're running it at my school, I know. But again, you had to sign up.
And I think that's the reason, yeah, I mean, with now, trying to get all the kids vaccinated is.
Teachers could, yeah.
Yeah, and then tracking it, we're now getting emails or tracking that for the kids that are.
Yeah.
Let's see, so, and then keeping in mind that, I mean, we're, I'll back up. So we're continuing to work with different organizations and boards and committees who are holding different functions and. who are holding different functions and trying to, you know, give guidelines to keep them safe. And keeping the social distance. And just as a reminder that if we're gonna engage in public activities, you have to remember to continue to protect yourselves inside and outside. And the more closely that you are interacting with somebody, it's, and the longer the interaction is, the higher the risk of you getting COVID.
Okay.
That's just, uh, so if you go in the grocery store and it's that friend that you haven't seen forever and you sit there and you're chatting away or in the parking lot or something, I guess the longer that you're in, I'm not talking about like if you're sitting there talking to Mary or, you know, people that are good all the time.
Did we, didn't Chief Modern in the fire department have a handout mask day or is that coming up?
Coming up this week.
This week. So we probably want to do a reverse 911 on that, Josh.
Reverse 911.
Yep. Because they're doing that right in the post office parking lot, right? Just drive, or drive throughs through the parking lot. So.
Okay.
And I'd have to say that's really great that he was able to get masks because I know that we've tried that with, in the past.
Yeah. Are they disposable that he's handing out?
Yeah, these, the ones you picked up from Mima. Mima had a whole pallet of them for us.
That's great.
Twelve hundred plus masks.
Yeah, sure. He figured with that many that some of the guys are gonna be there and they're gonna hand them out.
Do we know, um, what kind of masks do we have?
I believe, I believe they're the cone type. I'm not sure. You'd have to ask the chief about that.
That's great. Excellent. Anything else for us, Jennifer?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, do we have any more? Josh, do you have any more unfinished business for us? That's what I like to hear.
Combination of new business and unfinished business, maybe?
All right. So new business. New business, we've got revisit the fee schedule for electrical permitting inspections.
Yeah, I got, yeah, the notes that you sent on the right, which is handwritten notes by Larry, our electrical inspector. But he, those are just picking out loud notes. We sit, we sat down, we thought about, talked about it extensively. He was supposed to come tonight to talk about this and he's very open to whatever you guys want to do. But what you see there is Chester's electrical permit fees. They're aligned with Russell's. Same thing when we did building, same process. I thought it wouldn't be but idea to kind of revisit this, see where it makes sense to make changes if we want to. If we don't, that's fine.
Do we know what our current rates are?
It's, uh, I think it's forty dollars a ten dollar fee to the town and the electrical inspector pays thirty. Very high.
Yes.
So for all of these though, do we know what our?
That's what it is. Flat rate of thirty dollars per inspection.
Oh.
Is the inspector good with this?
So he's, so he was, he's, he's good with the changes. The one comment, which I don't necessarily, you know, disagree too much with, and I figured you guys can talk about it, was those changes that have to do with residential. So if you're a resident in town and you're trying to do, you know, keep that as this, the way that it is currently is just the flat rate of the forty dollars for the first inspection and the thirty dollars for every other inspection thereafter. Uh, and then, you know, those that have to do with, uh, like you'll see, like the solar, there's a solar permitting part.
Uh huh. Yep.
Things of that nature, large commercial scale type projects that we happen here, but one day do, um, but we increase those. That was just kind of one thing.
So one of the suggestions was leaving the flat rate for the residential and increasing the commercial rate?
Looks like he's, he is considering that we should adopt what Chester does, but he wanted to lower some of the rates to be more, that's what he's doing now. So it looks like instead of renovations, a hundred and twenty-five bucks, it would be ninety bucks, fifty and forty. And then, uh, you know, all the swimming pools and jacuzzis that we drop in up here, he was gonna drop that rate to fifty bucks.
With all of them. I was interpreting it as fifty dollar flat rate, forty dollars thereafter.
Flat rate, that's it. Fifty dollars. Sure.
I, was that what the note is there? The fifty dollars?
What, which part are you looking at? The residential?
Oh, yeah, up top here. My interpretation was since it's forty, thirty, wait, forty, thirty now, I thought he was saying, let's change it to fifty, forty and then.
Well, these fees, these are Chester's fees.
Yeah, I was looking at the note on the side. Is it, that's how I was interpreting.
Suggesting was renovations, Chester has a hundred and twenty-five dollars for two inspections.
Okay.
And then he just put a note there, um, you know, well, maybe this should be fifty dollars instead of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, but I don't know what that is plus forty.
Can, do you want to have a conversation with him or have him come?
Well, he was hoping to, I was hoping to come tonight, but considering that we're just bringing this up on a new business, just table it.
Yeah. If he can, and I know, I don't know how Larry is with, um, with the, with computer stuff. I don't know how to say that. So I was just thinking if we could like get some sort of a layout of exactly what it is that we're looking to change, just so that. I don't know.
If he wants to scratch all of residential and just have it fifty, forty, fine. But I, it's hard to interpret if he wants us to follow what Chester's doing with a few modifications.
Yeah.
Is he saying, hey, let's make it easier. I've only got four categories and we're good.
Yeah.
We can accommodate either way to, to the benefit of the town. We just want to make, understand what he's suggesting.
So if we want to put it to action item next?
So these notes that he put there, to clear the channel, he just put these here as notes, but it really, it really does, whatever the select board wants to do.
Okay.
You know, he understands. And then as we talked about it further, just kind of brainstorming, we're like, well, yeah, maybe not raising the inspection fees for folks who are residents and trying to pull permits for basic things. But understands also, you know, on the opportunity to raise, you know, as far as, you know, adding new revenue.
Sure.
He gets it.
Well, we haven't raised the rates for fifteen years. I'm writing Mike.
A little clearer. Yeah. So can we move it to an action item for next week and then have him either send us an email or call in or just something so we can confirm what it is that he's, what his thoughts are and then?
We, we, I don't want to say it. We don't mind the conflict of having the discussion. It's not a bad conflict. It's not negative. He just want to have a good discussion and rather than trying to guess.
Yeah. And I agree that residential rates keeping them. No, that's fine. Not your fault.
Good to share it with you anyways.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's time. Oh, is this your?
Yeah, mine's not populated like yours.
Listen, I have clipboards. That's all. It's not messy. It's just clipboards.
Put a big metal clip on it.
All right. So we've got our all department expenses to look through. Oh, I have it. You gave it to me. All right. So what percent should we be at? It's, uh, eighteen percent?
Barely.
All right. Select board expense. We need, we're at thirty-five percent.
Blew that out of the water.
What the heck, man?
What did we buy for nineteen hundred dollars?
I think we donated something. We did.
Computers. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good job.
And then we did something kind. I can't remember what it was. All right.
What are we gonna do? We want to get exercise equipment to go up there so that our folks can come in and exercise.
There you go. Can we look at a COA grant for some?
Oh, man, we can just pick that stuff up from DOD. They're closed and all kinds of.
Really?
Facility. You can pick up all kinds of stuff.
Can we seriously? Can you do that?
Oh.
Yeah. We just got to drive over to Pennsylvania and pick it up. So clear through mechanics for.
That would be pretty awesome to have some exercise equipment in here.
We got a truck. We got a four by four.
I'll print out.
And trailers.
An expenditure report and select order expense, so you can see.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Uh, thirty-five percent, we already talked about that. Town clerk assistant. Thirty percent town hall miscellaneous. I don't think we're budgeting enough for that. All right, IT, I'm not gonna ask because I already know the answer to that.
You sure?
I'm sure because we ask it every week. You should know the answer.
You should do something about that miscellaneous expense. My gosh, it's thirty percent.
I know. And this happens every time.
We did, uh, I know what it is. It's, uh, the inspections of the.
So.
Oh, the fire stuff?
We're at twenty, we're at twenty-one percent. And I know this seems geeky. We're at twenty-one percent on town hall labor when we should be about four percent lower than that based on where we're at in the year. So is that based on the improved cleaning schedule that we need to supplement that with our COVID funding or what?
Right. So that's the plan.
Yeah.
So coming October, the portal moves up to a supply for funds expended as well as.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're keeping track on it because it just looks like it's, you know, it's one of those little slightly two or three, four percent a month. And the next thing you know, you're gonna be in a hole.
Also highway overtime. We're at thirty percent. We're not even in the winter yet.
Winter gets spent on the winter budget. Overtime is the overtime budget.
Don't forget, he's had some pretty sharp storms and he's had to call help.
True, true. All right. We got equipment rental is way high.
We've got to, we've got to do something about that equipment room. There's a, there's a roller. And it sits down on the corner of Hayden Road and Cobble Mountain. It's sat there for three or four weeks.
And that's rental.
If we're not gonna use it, we're not having.
I think Rainey's on the phone.
Do you see where the volume is? He's probably young right now. It has a little speaker. It's a circle. There you go. Oh, no, that's Zoom.
I am, I am on the phone.
That's the right one.
Rainey, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. I've been, I've been on since, well, Lisa, when she was discussing.
Listen, we can't see you. We don't know who you are.
Well, I'm on the vineyard and I was trying to enjoy my vacation, you know? But anyway, um, yeah, it had sat there because if I would have gave it up, I wouldn't have got it back. And they have been using it, especially today, tomorrow, the day after and the day after. We've used it a few times in a number of spots. As far as the rental usage, it's gonna be pretty much depleted this fall, but that was my intention to get these things done this fall.
Okay. As long as you're aware of it and you got a plan.
Oh, I definitely do. And, uh, it, it, it has been one of those situations that we also finally got ahold of the Overguard rail mower. So it's a matter of manpower versus the equipment you have at the time. If I released that machine, I would have never got it back. And I really needed it to do a, a number of dirt roads that they are in fact doing this week and we will be doing next week too.
Okay. Do you guys have any more highway expense questions?
Um, do you, I guess I'm gonna ask a different question. Um, I know we've spent a lot of time trying to keep North Blanford Road patched together until our grant package comes through, but I drove the length of it the other day and it seems like we still need to do some more patching on it before winter comes, before some of those holes get deeper.
Well, the actual list that the guys got this week is to use the hot box on a couple of sections of Cobble Mountain to finish up spots that we weren't able to get before and go also back to North Blanford. I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we keep it up, but not too much because that is, that's an effect on how the grant is rated. But as far as that goes, yes, we, we do have more to do on it. I do know that we finally got that spring on North Blanford Road under control.
Yes, we did. Good job.
Yeah. Um, but I'd just like to say one thing before I forget. I wanted to say something earlier, but I was not sure what was said. Uh, when we were talking about Cobble Mountain and Lisa was discussing what they had found out through DCAM and everything, I wasn't sure and I was, this is actually directed to, to Josh. I wasn't sure, Josh, were you able to tell them prior to this that Mass District One, Francesca, Mark Moore and a few others were involved, well, with Pat also, were involved with a meeting with the governor's office pertaining to Cobble Mountain?
No, I didn't share that.
Oh, okay.
As Rainey was describing, about a month or so ago, Pat Carnavale, um, who's the Western Mass aide for the governor, came up here and met with Rainey and I and talked about a number of things, one of which was Cobble Mountain and this particular issue with Rainey who had learned that there was a meeting between him and representatives at Mass dot.
Oh.
But it wasn't, I don't know anything more than that. Just it was a great line.
That they were meeting?
Unless you know more.
Yeah.
You have certainly.
Well, they were supposedly meeting on, discussing the fact that it was a Mima evacuation route and that we have been denied access to part of that road that we, we've been denied to be able to utilize chapter ninety funding to maintain the road. Um, and it wasn't, it wasn't, um, an issue with me that they haven't maintained it. It was we could be held liable and I wanted to get this cleared up that we were not the ones that were denying access.
You know, the whole, I mean, it's probably getting on the topic a little bit, but the whole interesting thing, the fact that all of Cobble Mountain Road is owned by DCAM.
All of it.
All of it. And, uh, once we've settled this and I'm signed with this, not it might have to be some sort of discussion as to, you know, does DCAM want us to continue to maintain the road? And if they do, we're gonna want some sort of agreement on paper saying such.
Yeah.
And if they don't, then we stop maintaining it, stop shoveling it, and they have to take it on. But then we have to revisit our chapter ninety formula as well. There's all these other questions that come up. With this one issue.
Yep.
And we just want a nice lake that we can walk around and see.
I want to be able to drive all the way through.
I know. Me too, Rainey.
How is this company getting, uh, to buy off a road?
They didn't.
It's the state. Department of.
Capital assets.
Yeah, it's the chapter ninety road.
All right. No more, no more tangents.
Okay. I looked at the rest of the budget. It was good.
My question was on transfer station salaries. Is Jenna aware or is the Board of Health aware that it's at thirty percent?
They're probably the same issue with COVID because they had to add people to the landfill and do some other.
Okay. So we should be able to use some funding there. Okay. Library expenses is over. I think we talked a little bit about that. Is that also COVID? Can we use funding for, I know that we've been doing extra cleaning and whatnot there. Okay, Josh, do you have, I'm gonna turn that down. Do you have other new business, Josh?
Sure. So October seventeen, it's Saturday and the time shift is, I did learn from here. We went up for you. And it's town meeting day or town collections.
Early voting.
Early voting.
Early voting.
So we changed the time. So we're looking to have an information session meeting regarding broadband on October seventeen, two sessions, one to two thirty and three to four thirty.
Jennifer and, she got, Jennifer and Peter talked just a little while ago. Jennifer says they cannot do it after early voting. They, they can't mix.
So, so we can't do it, so we can't do it October seventeen? Okay.
Yeah, October tenth, October tenth. Okay.
Okay.
Which is fine.
Okay.
Something special though.
If we could do one later. If we can do one later than that three to four thirty on October tenth, like an eve, an evening one. Oh, it's a Saturday? Oh, okay. Okay, but.
They tend to do it on dump day, but.
It is dump day.
Oh, it is dump day.
Look at you go.
Yeah, let's be. Yeah, let's be politically correct.
Resource management.
If he wanted to do it at the same time, ten to noon.
Yeah.
But at the same time as early voting, so if he wants to do it ten to noon on the tenth.
Is it live or Zoom?
Changing this, and people.
Probably vote.
I've never heard anything about it until just now, so there's no chance.
Yeah, cause we had been scheduled, I had it on my calendar for a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, you did.
Cause people are like, weekly, I get that question, what's happening?
We're back to tentative, and it's October tenth, tentatively.
Okay. Okay.
Got all the wires pulled in town yet?
Don't be tangening, tangent, 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 no tangents.
I'm sorry, hope we got all the glass line.
No.
Peter did wanted to ask.
Doesn't help.
If you guys are comfortable with us using reverse nine-one-one.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay.
Even better if they brought the equipment with them, that they could sign people up right then and there.
That would be awesome. Great.
So they, they are gonna do.
I still haven't got my fifty dollars back from Wired West.
You haven't sent your letter?
I know, I got a.
October nineteenth, just want you to know that that meeting day is gonna be jointly with Tom Chester.
Okay. So hopefully we have our sound situation repaired by that. Oh, they're coming here?
They're coming here, yeah.
Okay.
It's a home game instead of an away game.
Don't forget that special town meeting next week, Monday, seven, the hour prior to you, the team.
So six o'clock, we'll be here, okay, yep. Uh, the town meeting starts at seven, but we have to be here at six for, um, attorney.
What's that?
Next week.
What?
Yeah, for real.
We got an all-town meeting next week, special town meeting?
It's just a small one, I don't think there's anything major on it.
And lastly, uh, probably after this, um, I think you, as you were talking about, Jean Leclerc.
I know, it's so sad.
Directors are moving on in a couple of weeks, uh, it's a newer, better thing.
She's done a lot for us, it's sad to see.
What happens when you have to sleep in the attic all for three years?
Yeah.
So, uh.
Um, oh, it said it in her letter.
She went to a better J O B, that's all.
It's in Waltham, um.
Not that it was better.
It's like, it's like a.
It was awful, she couldn't refuse, she said.
Yeah. In other words, her boyfriend said, I'm moving, you coming?
Husband.
Husband, okay. I'm moving, you coming?
But, uh, the collaborative, you know, they're getting together to strategically think how to proceed with efforts around economic development.
It's gonna be tough, because there's. It's been so helpful for us to have her in that position, and I know we've kicked a lot of stuff her way, but there are two towns I can think of off the top of my head that are, I know would not be interested.
They're dead set against it.
Continuing, and so it's gonna be difficult to.
Is she gonna be replaced at some point?
That's the question.
No, well, she's not gonna be replaced, um. So the collaborative is looking, uh, where the members of the collaborative are looking to convene and talk about how they can reinvig, you know, kind of re-inspire, um, the direction.
Yep.
And moving away from the shared economic development position to instead, uh, just being, being a resource avenue for the Hill towns, that shared gateway. And P D B C was looking to actually be more involved as key facilitators um, as a way to, uh, you know, come up with new project ideas that are gonna help stimulate, you know, new growth and economic community engagement and so forth, so that's the talk on the interim, um, but when the collaborative meets, we'll learn more.
So Gateway's gonna have a position to fill, because she was, she had filled a position that was vacated there. Yeah, I mean, I think we made a lot of headway, but not, not in terms of gateway population.
We get a rebate. Yeah, she had like twenty thousand dollars for the salary that was with the Gateway School District, they're not using it now, so now we'll get a kickback.
Massachusetts Life Science Center in Waltham, Mass.
Yeah.
Is where her new position is.
Can't keep the money if they didn't spend it on what they're supposed to. Look at us, getting a rebate check.
All right.
Stays in our pocket, so we'll just.
Anything else? Oh, that was a tie, I'm gonna go with Mary.
I just thought you would like to know, the library will be open on Saturday starting.
Yes. Good, and it's, do you know what the hours are?
Uh, ten to four.
Ten to four.
Ten to four.
And we were the first to rent a robot, that is the coolest thing, she's, T J was there. You can rent the kids, um, Carrie, your grandkids should, or Carrie, Joanne, Carrie's kids should go in there. They can rent, um, there's like four different robots, and they rent and they practice coding, and there's kits that come with it, and it's it's amazing, it's really awesome. I guess Nicole wrote a grant and got this awesome grant, so we got some good stuff going on there, it's really exciting. Oh, you gotta wait your turn, yes. We'll see what you can do with those robots, T J. Uh, Joanne, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanna say, well, Matthew Johnson, I, I did make notes what they did a couple of weeks ago and what they're doing tomorrow, I just don't have it right here.
Okay.
There, there are, there are two different things. I don't have it saved in my head, so I'll report that to you tomorrow.
And that, wait, remind me what you're talking about right now?
Counting controls, the, um, inspection sprinkler.
Oh, yeah, okay, she's talking about the amount of money that we put in, um, we're talking about town miscellaneous, it was a inspection, yes, I know what you're talking about.
Yep, inspection contract.
T J.
We started doing repair work on Warfield Cemetery.
Okay.
And we have a permission letter from Springfield Water Shore, so we can go in and complete the work.
Okay.
And Peter Spars is doing, doing the work himself, and, uh, he's doing a great job.
That's awesome. Good. Good job.
T J, did you get that bank landscape, the Warfield Cemetery?
Rain, Rain? Oh, I know, so, yeah, Rain's getting, uh, six, what do they call it? Six quarters, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, look right.
But, George Langdoners, when we get the right stuff. Don't put that up there.
He's not on, so you're good. All right, um, if there's, if there's nothing else, then we are closing at eight fifteen, a half an hour before my time that was planned. I am going to go straight to bed, cause I have to wake up at five forty, and I hate it.